All right, welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. We are going to open our meeting with an invocation which I will ask Mr. Andrews to lead and the pledge which I'll ask Ms. De Marto to lead. If y'all wish to stand, please join us.
Let us pray. While as we stand today, so undeserving of all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us each and every day, we are so thankful. We thank you for this opportunity for those of us gathered at this particular spot to be called servants, to serve our community and our country, above all, the city of Shreveport and surrounding area. Today, we pray for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we hear the requests from these, our community citizens. Please bless these proceedings. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
For the reasons still to be had under the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, once again, thank you all so much for being here and for giving up your afternoon for this public service. We really appreciate it. Before I begin, I want to wish one of our board members, Ms. Smith, a happy birthday.
Yeah.
And it's an honor that she's spending her birthday with us, so thank you. All right, for public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it's very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor, and then 10 minutes will be allotted for the principal spokesperson, and then only three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, 10 minutes for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application may then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment during that time. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 PM tomorrow or by accessing our website, shreveportcaddompc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC board zoning recommendations are submitted to either the City Council or the Parish Commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it's your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matter that you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all your cell phones while the board is in session. The commission values your testimony and we appreciate your compliance with these guidelines and again, we appreciate your time and your presence today. So first, I will ask our board about approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Andrews and a second by Mr. Joseph for our September minutes. All right, and our September minutes are approved. Thank you. All right, does not appear we have any consent agenda items today. So our first case in our public hearing is case number 19387C, which is a rezoning request. On the applicant is Roanoke Development. Oh, and also, I was, um, I believe this was a deferred case from last month and it was to allow for a public meeting to be had for the developer to meet with the neighborhood. And I believe there was a meeting and we had a couple of our, I think our director attended and our deputy director. And I would like to ask before we begin, I'm sorry, if there's any feedback you might have about that meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, at your September 4th meeting, I requested, if you would, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I requested that if you would, that you would defer and continue this application to allow the applicant to meet with the neighborhood to get a better understanding of what was being proposed in the neighborhood at that location along Jefferson Page Road. That meeting did occur at the Western Hills Baptist Church. And I attended and the deputy director, Mr. Stephen Jean, also attended and we listened to the comments and listened to exactly the information from the applicant, Mr. Strange, of what was being proposed for that location. After that meeting, we came back because the initial recommendation that we had made to the board was to approve the application based on the previous zoning that was at the site. There was R3 zoning on the corner and there was B3 zoning, abutting that R3 zoning, which we had felt, based on that zoning, would be appropriate for the multifamily development along Jefferson Page. After we came back and met as a staff again, we re-reviewed the information that's up on the screen now showing that the entire tract of land is zone RE. And there is no multifamily zoning around the immediate area. And we felt that it was too big of a leap to leap from RE to R2. It would have been consistent if we had recommended the leap from RE to R1, one of the R1 classifications, which would have been single-family dwellings. But the density involved in the condo and the R2 development was too intense for that area. After reviewing all of that information, we reconsidered our recommendation and changed our recommendation. The recommendation that's before you today is that we recommend that you deny the application of R2 zoning that's being submitted by the applicant.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark, for clarifying that. We all have our reports as well. All right, for our initial speaker, our principal spokesperson for the application, come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is John Settle. My office address is 1915 Citizens Bank Drive. I'm not the applicant. I was just a local step and fetchet until I was called and said he could not make the meeting today due to a conflict he could not resolve. I did attend the meeting at the church and I am familiar with the project. This was explained to you at the last meeting. I happened to come in and see part of the presentation. And I can go over it again or I don't need to waste your time if you're still familiar with it. Basically, the applicant wants to put in 44 townhouses on a five-acre tract. Spend $8 million. This would be a gated community with a clubhouse. It would not be visible from Pines Road and barely visible from Jefferson Page. You can see that it's surrounded a great deal by the RE. The proposal is to build a 300-foot drive from Jefferson Page that that ends into the townhouse development. This is a deal that, excuse me, a transaction that involves tax credits from the Louisiana Housing Corporation. I'm not that familiar with it. I have visited with him. It allows a development and then they can sell the tax credits and thereby apply the tax credits to the outstanding purchase price of the home. To qualify for one of the townhouses, the family or person must have an income of $30,000 to $60,000. It's limited to that range. If they have more than 60, they don't qualify. If less than 30, they don't. Again, those are the rules that were explained to me by Mr. Strange and I have to take that as the nature of it. He still is, he has put a deposit down with the state to ensure the tax credits and he wants to proceed with this hearing today. I understand there's substantial neighborhood opposition, but it's part of the process that he wants to proceed with this development. Any questions that I could possibly, I'm just the messenger, so I'm starting to wear my bullseye today, but I didn't want to ruin my suit. He does have his financing line. You know, democracy demands respect.
I'm sorry, if you don't mind, just when you're up there, just address them forward.
Well, this is, respect, I'm not going to interrupt these people. I went to their meeting, sat there, listened to them, and I'm just hoping that this will be a mutual thing. That's what democracy demands. Anyway, I can answer any other questions probably.
Yes, and you have our full attention, so don't worry. Ms. Smith has a question.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Hey, Ms. Smith.
How you doing? Did not you hear what Mr. Clark, I know you want to do your presentation and you just finished, but did not you hear what Mr. Clark stated a few minutes ago?
Ms. Smith, I did. I'd seen the report prior to this. You need to realize I'm the agent. I've been asked to appear and do that. Mr. Strange has that report. I received it from Mr. Clark timely and he really submitted it to Mr. Strange who submitted it to me. I'm aware of the report. I'm basically, when I was in the military, I was given orders and followed orders, whether it was to pick up the trash or to get a haircut. In the first day in the service, I got three haircuts so I could get in compliance. So I'm here today as the messenger, the agent. I'm not here to disagree with the report.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good seeing you again.
Any other questions, Mr. Settle? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? All right, anyone here to speak in opposition? And I'll remind you that principal spokesperson has 10 minutes and everyone else has three. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Joyce Lawrence. I reside at 4107 Scenic Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am here today to speak in opposition of any form of low-income housing tax credits. Here's why. First of all, we, this is the third time in a matter of eight years we've addressed this issue. The staff report submitted with the applicant's, uh, application stated that there was one application that was withdrawn and one that was denied. Uh, the application that was withdrawn was also withdrawn under arrest. It had community opposition then and it has community opposition now, and here's why. I've prepared some documents for you and it may be too much information, but there's lots of questions that people have about what is this, what is really going on? What does this really mean to the community and why is the community so adamant that it does not want this development in its area? There are numerous programs and financial schemes for developers, investors, as well as the potential residents, residential renters and purchasers of affordable housing. The most popular of these for the developer and investor is the low-income housing tax credit, known commonly as mixed-income housing, Section 8, low-income, and housing vouchers. The problem with this venture is a negative economic impact created by increase in crime, usually beginning in the complex itself, but quickly spreading to the surrounding neighborhoods and communities. The properties at Raspberry Lane are a prime example. The current, recent shooting at La Tierra on the 18th is another example, all low-income tax credit units.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, if I could just interrupt with a quick question.
Sure.
Because our board was, we had this issue today when we were discussing this case and I would ask for maybe some confirmation, but I'm, my understanding is this, this development is not a Section 8 low-income tax credit development. Am I correct?
Mr. Strange has his application in, ma'am, and we've requested it through their legal services at the Louisiana Housing Corporation, which is another question we have. How did he get approval for a site plan to submit with an application before this process occurred? He has an address for that establishment. How did that happen in its wooded area? So...
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to get our facts straight and I need some, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, but I didn't want you to go on and on about the Section 8 income, if that's not the case and this...
It's not just Section 8. It's mixed income and he has an application in for the low-income housing tax credits. We verified that with the Louisiana Housing Corporation.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, you may continue. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Shreveport has 83, I'm sorry. The problem with this venture, Ms. Cooper, is the negative impact that it has with increasing crime, blight, and other situations, as I mentioned, the one on Raspberry Lane and the one on La Tierra. While a new constructed complex would appear more attractive in our area, once the tax credits have been exhausted by the initial developer, these probably soon become an eyesore, suffering from disrepair, litter, and thus increasing blight in our community. In our area already, we are faced with little or no code enforcement. Crime and blight destroy our home values. Shreveport has 83 complexes that have utilized tax credits for renovation, new construction, and the such. Many are overrun with blight, litter, and crime, and some in serious disrepair, usually because they're constructed with substandard materials. These circumstances diminish the value, not just for the complex itself, but for otherwise stable communities such as ours. In West Shreveport, we have 15 of the 83 tax credit complexes, which is nearly 20% for the whole city, while the city of Bossier has the same exact equal number, 15 through the whole city of Bossier, and we have 15 in West Shreveport. The low-income housing tax credit scheme, in my mind, equates to corporate welfare, which is a topic few are willing to discuss. But my rationale for this statement is that once tax credits are exhausted, the developer cuts and runs, claiming no further responsibility. And generally in Shreveport, while these were built to be low-income affordable housing, I have found in my research supports that all of the buildings, when the tax credits are gone and the feds are not monitoring the tax credit in the buildings anymore, the rents go up. I believe it worthy to note that twice before, our community has opposed the development of affordable housing. The one withdrawn under duress and the other voted down. Someone stated that government is not in the business of discriminating. I'm going to stand here today and respectfully disagree, consider the placement of affordable housing throughout the city of Shreveport. In fact, the continual placement of affordable housing in minority and communities of color in the city of Shreveport perpetuates segregation. We are a very segregated city, which is not the intent of the Fair Housing Act, which provides for affordable housing on HUD. That's not the intent. That act is intended to bring us together, to create diverse communities and affordable housing opportunities for everyone. The Federal Housing Act expresses in one of its policy statements this. "A lack of housing opportunity and practices that continue to segregate by race force the majority of African-Americans and other people of color to live in racially or ethnically segregated neighborhoods," end quote. Gratefully, however, our community remains diverse and we are pretty settled in that we don't want any more low-income tax credit after having 15 units, complexes, which equate to about 1,200 actual rental units for everybody. And they also, Ms. Cooper, accept Section 8. They have subsidized rent. They have assisted rent. They are just not Section 8 and so let's not discriminate against any one program. When they get the tax credits, they all equate to the same thing. I leave you with this thought and a couple of recommendations. These are. The thought: We need affordable housing for all of our citizens, yet not while divesting current communities and neighborhoods at the expense of destroying value of the current homeowners, nor at the expense of perpetuating a segregated Shreveport any longer. The American Planning Association states this. "A planning commission is a group of appointed or elected officials who oversee city planning. These officials are charged with controlling growth, promoting economic health, and improving the quality of life for all citizens." Where is our planning when we continually misplace these particular developments? What tools are used to measure the community impact? These are the recommendations from Citizen Lawrence. Involve the community at the beginning of development concepts when they're presented to you so that we can work together and don't learn down the road that an undesirable project is coming and have a knee-jerk reaction. Having obtained an address already and submitted the application for several months before these meetings are held is an excellent example in this case, this instant case today. Look to developing and implementing inclusionary zoning and other evidence-based best practices for affordable housing for all of our citizens. Lots of communities, hundreds of cities across the country, use them. The low-income housing tax credit opportunities for developers and investors does exist in inclusionary zoning. The time is out for politicizing development and to implement real planning that control growth, protect and promote economic health in my community, and improve rather than diminish my quality of life. Thank you for your time and your indulgence.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. I think Ms. Smith has a question.
I have. Did the developer meet with you all before you all decided to meet with him?
No, we didn't know anything until two days before you had the actual hearing here.
Okay, thank you for that. Tax credit, and I'm against tax credit. I'm very familiar with the homes there on Round Grove because you would have to stay in them X number of years before you would even think about owning a tax credit. But Mr. Clark, will you explain to them what you did tell us?
Well, basically, Ms. Smith, as I've shared on many occasions, all that is before you is the rezoning of the property from RE to R2. We don't get involved in the type of financing that's involved in constructing any project. We basically deal with the land use and the R2.
So right now you are, oh, excuse me.
No, ma'am, no problem. The R2 was just for the multifamily use. We would not get into whether it's a market rate, low income, financing, tax credit, or anything. If it is a, meets the definition of multifamily and the zoning is approved, then that's the use that would be allowed.
But right now, can he do anything in that area?
Right now, in order for him to do what he's proposing to do, he would have to have the property rezoned and that's the application that's before this board.
They're not recommending this, ma'am, the status.
Which we have reasons, which we have recommended that you deny and not let this go forward.
And not due to the financing, it's due to the zoning, the density, yeah.
Yes.
It's strictly based on density and the type of zoning that's being requested.
I think it is important for everyone to know that, know that the financials and the whatever, you know, the definition that didn't affect the change on the, on the recommendation.
Not whatsoever. The recommendation was based strictly on the fact that the density, the type of zoning was not appropriate for the area that it's being proposed in.
We fully understand that. But our one request, if he's coming with some low-income tax credit housing, I guess we'll be back on that one if he submits it, on that issue as well.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Lawrence? Thank you very much. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Nathaniel Manning, 6303, Gilwood Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. I'm here as the president of the West Shreveport Alliance and I would like to recognize all of the alliance members. If you please withstand all of you who came. Thank you very much. Ms. Lawrence, thank...
If y'all would please remain standing for a moment, we can try to get a HUD count. All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Manning.
Thank you. I have taken the opportunity to request the freedom of information in regard to the application. And like Ms. Lawrence said, I was very disturbed by that for this particular company to be able to ascertain an address and a name and had already applied for, and it is definitely a low-income tax credit, what he did. And just to give you an idea of what Roanoke's niche is, I went out and I researched it and it reads, "Roanoke Development, formerly known as New Horizons Development, is a culmination of over 50 years of experience in the development of low to moderate-income housing developments throughout the southeast. Roanoke also partners with public housing authorities, state agencies, and private investors." So when I hear public housing authorities, that's exactly what it is. You can call it Section 8, you can call it low income, you can call it moderate income. There's a whole salad of different words you can use for it, but in the end, it's low-income housing. Now, also associated with, pardon? Also associated with Provius, I mean with Roanoke, is Provius Construction. That is a construction company that will do the actual building of these housing units. I've researched them. It's a company that is not even registered with the Better Business Bureau and I have taken the opportunity to go out and find all of the properties that they have undertaken in the United States. Most of these properties, from what you can see, are built out of very cheap material, which also means they use very cheap labor. So these are not very, not even very durable properties. The other thing I found, and we talked about this, $8 million that Roanoke plans to spend. Well, he's requested $750,000 from the Louisiana Housing Corporation for these low-income tax credits. But he also was saying that he wanted to spend $8 million to produce 44 units. So I found a similar property that he did in Faraday, Louisiana. He spent $8 million for that one and he built 40 units. And let me just kind of describe it to you. And he also called these things, I think, Westlake gates. So he used the word gates in a lot of his properties that he's developing around the country. And from what I saw here, the property consists of one bedroom that are going for as low as $463 a month, two bedrooms with $560 a month, to three bedrooms was $653 a month. So just thinking about that, that shows that this is actually for low income. So that's my thing on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manning. I'm sorry, I gave you an extra minute because of the time we...
Okay, thank you so much for being so generous, Ms. Cooper. I appreciate it.
Sorry.
All right.
All right, wait just a minute. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Manning? Okay, we're good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Good afternoon. I am Louis Johnson, 6613, Gehagen Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119.
Welcome.
To Executive Director, Mr. Clark, and to each member here on today, I want to say, first of all, thank you to all of the citizens that have come out today to make sure that their position and their voices are heard. I want to say thank you to the Executive Director and to the other members who have soundly made the decision to reject this. That is what our goal is. That is what our wishes are. I serve as commissioner of Caddo Parish District 12 and it's my responsibility and my commitment to support the positions of our community. And our community is to do just that. So being that at this point, it has been established that it has been requested that this request for zoning change would be rejected, I'd like to thank each of you in advance for listening and respecting the wishes of this community, listening and respecting the wishes... the wishes and the findings of your own board, and ask that you would please soundly defeat this and that you would soundly reject it on today. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Hang on one sec. Does anyone have any questions for Commissioner Johnson?
No, I would just like to thank all of them for showing up.
Absolutely.
And we do have a plan in mind when we vote to do what is right.
Thank you very much. That's what we're asking, and we all appreciate that.
Exactly.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Robert Crosby. I live at 6234 LaFlore. Mr. Strange made it sound pretty nice and interesting over at the meeting at the church that he would sell these units at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, forty-two units, and it would cost him about one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That didn't sound too businesslike in the first place. So when you get an eight million dollars tax credit to cover this, that comes out to one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents per unit. At one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to him, that would leave him fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents per unit, which is six hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. So you wonder why this is so interesting for him to just to not to sell the units at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars instead of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because they wouldn't qualify in the low-income bracket after his ten years it's been put in, and the only thing he's going to do is cut and run. If you look at our area, it's becoming a dumping ground. From Curtis Lane back toward Jefferson Page, you have closed stores, buildings, trucking companies sitting right next to churches. You have six hotels that is cut and run, and they have turned into low-income apartments for people to move in. You have a porty-potty company sitting right there in the, at the corner of Monk House Drive and Jefferson Page. And then you have a piping company, gravel company, that's polluting our areas that sit right behind it on Jefferson Page. Go down a little bit, you have a storage building, a unit that has sit there, has become now in, right in the doorway of that community that's sitting back there in the, off of the interstate. And if you just could move it on down, move it on down, it's just becoming bad, bad, bad. And now you want to take this and dump that into our neighborhood, and later on, we're going to have another problem. Right after we had the meeting at the church on the nineteenth, the very next day, we had a shooting in Latier.
Same night?
The same night? Same night. We don't need that. And I appreciate Ms. Clark for listening to our meeting and making that decision for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Any questions? Mr. Crosby? Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
To the MP Board, good afternoon. My name is Kay Probie Waller. I reside at 4250 Caldwell Drive. I'm standing here with homeowner, Linder Piper. We're standing in absolute opposition to Case 19387 on behalf of Timberline, Deer Creek, Colonial Heights, Western Hills, Twilight, Willa Ridge Unit Three, and surrounding communities. You know, it just appears that developers are trying to push new developments to line their own pockets, rather than considering what are the needs of West Street Port and what will enhance our quality of life. You know, West Street Port is starving for healthy food options. We're starving for a healthy family or an entertainment options. And listen, we are open to good projects that will grow our communities, and we are open to developers to come out to our homeowners association meetings and speak with residents and listen to residents, to our concerns, that what we want and what would better residents like myself, that's what we are open to. A vote to move forward with this project in West Street Port would be unfair, insulting, and would definitely stunt the growth of West Street Port. It is our request that you will listen to our concerns, and thank you, Mr. Clark, for hearing our voices. If I may, I would like to submit another fourteen pages of signed petitions that residents was not able to sign the previous one. So if I would, I would like to submit that for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Waller, and thanks for the petition. Are there any questions for Ms. Waller? All right, seeing none. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
My name is Travis Griffin Jr. I live at 6701 Towering Oaks Drive, Shreveport, ZIP Code 71119. Hello, classmate, Ms. Bessie Smith. I understood Mr. Clark says that you all have rejected the zoning change, and I applaud that. They haven't...
For the record...
Recommendation?
For the record, the board received the recommendation from our staff.
Okay.
The staff at this juncture has recommended a denial.
Okay, great.
We have not yet voted.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. I wanted to make sure and clarify that so that everybody here understands that. We are a united community, as you can see here. We had over six hundred people in attendance at Mission Hills Baptist Church. I think Mr. Nathaniel Manning presented to you earlier petitions listing seven hundred and twenty names. In addition, the young lady just presented you additional signatures. I would like to make sure and ensure, if you will, if you would take the consideration and give it your most undesirable and thoughtfulness in voting in favor. In favor, number one, in terms of objection, in terms of what's being presented here. I'm, I get emotional on this. I love my neighborhood. I get very emotional, and there are other people here in this audience who are very emotional. Every time the subject come up, I tell you, I really get emotion. Our neighborhood is declining for the simple reason is, right now, on the corner of Jefferson Page and Pines Road, they're building a Dollar Tree. There exists at that corner currently a Circle K, right next to it is a Family Dollar. We've been informed that a permit for a Dollar General has been submitted, and I believe approved, to build a Dollar General on the corner right cross from the service station at Brookshires. I did a survey, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I drove from downtown Shreveport, Yuri Drive, all the way to Sam's Club, there is one Dollar Tree. Yesterday, I drove from downtown Shreveport, proceeding down Line Avenue to Seventieth Street, not one Dollar Tree. But when you enter what we consider Queensborough, predominantly African-American neighborhood, there is one. Proceed out of Queensborough, from Spring Lake, Line Avenue to Elbe River to East Fort Hill, Lucas Road, guess how many Dollar Trees? How many Family Dollars? How many Dollar Trees? Zero. Zero. So what does that say? For some reason, and I don't want to get into the race card, I don't want to go there, but I see a distinction here between that area town and the West Street Port area. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the reality. Ms. Cooper, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
But these are the facts, and I would ask that you all consider the facts that are out here now, and we're going to be here, and we'll come back and address this issue as long as we have to, and if we have to take the legal route, then we'll do that also. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any questions for Mr. Griffin from the board? Any questions? All right, thanks again for your time. Any other person here to speak in opposition to this application?
I'm Jerry Bowman, 9228 West Aragon. I won't take up too much of your time. I just want you to really consider what you've seen here today and what you've heard. Of course, me and the Commissioner for that district both stand in oppositions, and I just want to say that and make sure that's on the record, that we're not for this being built over in this community. Okay?
Good to see you, Councilor.
Yes. Thank you, Councilor. Oh, I'm sorry, can you read real quick? You've got a question.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Andrew Andrews, good afternoon. Good afternoon, sir. Thank you very much for coming. Since I have you here and we have you here, and thank you for taking out the time, we have a Commissioner that as far as to be re-elected from the parish, and we have community leaders sitting here representing some fifteen different neighborhood associations in West Street Port. We live in perhaps the most diverse community, the most integrated community in Street Port. If we were to do a head count or a house count, we'd find that to still possibly be true. But I wanted to say to you, for some reason, for some odd reason, there's this idea that West Street Port is anti-business.
Right.
And at some point in time, we would appreciate community leaders such as yourself that's elected, our Commissioners, that would sit down with our Executive Director and whomever else represents the various neighborhood associations to talk about what you want to see in West Street Port.
Right.
As far as businesses are concerned. We know what's there. We've been reminded what's there and what's coming, but we would love for you guys to sit down with our staff, with our Executive Director, and talk about the future. There's some new staff members that have been hired. They have some specific job assignments in relative to working in the various communities around the city now and five miles out, and we'd love for you guys to pick a time so that this kind of roundtable discussion, not at just one time, but set it up where it can be done more and more. I know we have a staff member, Mr. Bailey, who deals with the Master Plan Program, but at the same time, I sense from listening on the sidewalk talk that you guys are interested in more than just that happening in West Street Port. Please take that opportunity to reach out to our staff, our executive staff, and make that happen.
Okay. I've spoken to the mayor, and he's open to that conversation. I've also spoken to Mr. Clark, and we will have that meeting. I'm sure that Mr. Manning and some others would be happy to be in attendance at that meeting also. Last night, I attended many night outs, and some not even in my district, but they're connected, District A, and they spoke just as highly against this as others. So I want, I didn't want to not, I did not want to get up and not say that. So just to let you know, I just hope that you all do listen to what's being said and what we feel what's going on over in that area. I've been beat up about, it's just fast food restaurants up there, and we do want some other things to come to West Street Port, so that conversation is very much so open.
Well, before you leave the podium, I think it is important that the audience knows that we've received those over seven hundred-plus signatures. We, of course, we got more publicity on Thursday than we normally get with various citizens out recruiting signatures in the parking lot, and we applaud you for reaching out to the neighborhood in that effort. I hope that in the future, when there's an opportunity for you guys to talk to the mayor, the City Council, and the parish commission, and our staff about businesses coming in that direction that you take advantage of. I think it is important also, Madam Chair, while I have the mic, that those of you who don't know, that Chris, who sits down on the end, represents West Street Port. I represent Southern Trace. I represent Southern Hills. Ms. Cooper represents Stoner Hill. She represents Cooper Road. We don't represent districts. We represent the entire city and five miles out. So when you ask Ms. Cooper from her neighborhood, you need to stand up for my neighborhood, she has to stand up for the entire city. I have that same responsibility. It just so happens that my street dead ends into this property this time, so when people come to me, I have to give you that speech, but at the same time, I'm a citizen as well, and thank you for taking this lecture.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, Councilor.
You can't be mad at that.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? At this time, the applicant may choose to offer rebuttal, and we will, we will be respectful at this time, too.
How much time do I have? Three or five?
Three.
Three, okay. That's fine. These other cases are tough, if, and y'all dealt with one that's going to be in front of the City Council next week, the liquor store on the corner of Kings and Gilbert, and that will have more people at that than here, and y'all approved that last year, and now it's coming back to the council. I think there's a lot of things that need to be disregarded by some of the comments before. Number one, Jefferson Page zoning is what it is. I didn't participate in that. It does have a lot of Family Dollars and all that. That's not, that doesn't have anything to do with this project. The zoning on Jefferson Page is not before you today. I don't think it's relevant to this case. Secondly, the type of construction, we have building codes in the city of Shreveport that are aggressively enforced, so any new construction is supposed to comply with all of that. I don't build the houses. I haven't looked at them, but we do have building codes. So talk of building codes in this project, I don't really think is relevant. We need to remember, and y'all know this, that any site plan has to be approved by the MPC and go through many, many, many hurdles, and that also has to do with the proposed project. Forty-four townhouses, pick any number you want, two people, three people in them, that is not an extreme density. And the fact to say that forty-four townhouses in this isolated area, that that is going to increase crime and blight, I think is a stretch. And I think it's also a stretch to shun or kick to the curb working families that earn thirty to sixty thousand dollars. Those are the only people who can qualify for this program, which is mortgage-based, and the tax credits apply to them. I can remember when I made much less than thirty thousand, and on social security, I'll still make less than that. So there's a lot of senior citizens who are living on retirement and other things that fall into that category, and so we can condemn, kick to the curb, low income, so all, everyone here should remember the days when your salaries were thirty to sixty thousand dollars. I get interrupted a lot. The issue of tax credits is that with the Louisiana Housing Corporation. All of that is not before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saddle. Any questions?
Make sure I get a question.
All right, Board, what is your pleasure?
I have a term in motion to...
Second.
Deny the request.
Second the motion.
All right, Mr. Andrews has moved to deny, and Ms. Smith has seconded. Is there any discussion? Or questions? I'll see none, I'll call for the vote. So we are...
Voting against.
Voting against, a vote of yes will be to deny. And that application is denied.
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, were you...
I voted.
You voted, but you seconded the denial and you voted...
I voted yes to deny.
Okay. It was unanimous, Madam Chair, but that's not what I was...
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
I'm denying it. You make sure you put that on record. I am on Stony Hill, too. I want to let you know that.
And you seconded the motion. And you seconded the motion, so we were clear.
That's it.
I think, Madam Chair, just real briefly, I think what this meeting has exemplified is that there is much work, much... I just, yes, my mic doesn't work. There's much work to be done in the entire city. But I think the citizens here are sharing with us and asking us to work with them because there's much work to be done in West Shreveport. And we stand ready to work with all of the neighborhood associations in West Shreveport to assist you in achieving the goals that you have not written down, that you have not adopted, that there are not anywhere but in your thoughts and in your minds. All of this energy that we've seen today, it's commendable, and this is what makes anything start to move. You've united as citizens together, and you've made a statement that's been heard. But this is just the beginning, and I hope that the citizens of West Shreveport are committed to bringing about change in West Shreveport and unite and get together, and we will come and meet with you and share with you how the process works, what we're doing, what's happening in the planning arena, what type of planning activities we're initiating. We will come and share all of that information with you so that you will have a better grasp and a better appreciation of what the MPC is doing. And I just want to share that with the citizens, Madam Chair.
For the record, we have a plan of action.
Okay, and thank you all again for coming. It's a real pleasure to see everyone taking a part in this process. We appreciate it. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to our next application. The next case is case number nineteen three sixteen P, and it's a zoning request. And the applicant is Triple N Automotive LLC. Welcome and thank you for your patience.
No problem. I'm Randall Nixon, owner of Triple N Automotive.
Yes, tell me your name again. I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry?
Repeat your name for me.
Randall Nixon.
Mr. Nixon, okay. Thank you for coming.
And I am the owner of Triple N Automotive. I'm not going to have an audience like they have.
No, it's okay. We're your audience. We're your audience. All right, you want to just tell us a bit about your application?
Okay, well, I've owned this property for eighteen years, and I've been licensed, had an occupational license for fifteen years from the city of, up till twelve from the city of Shreveport. And then I found out I didn't need a city of Shreveport license, so I got a parish license. And I went through the whole process when I got my original license, and I got a certificate of occupancy, I'm sure, to get a city license. So I don't know what happened. But see, half part of my property is commercial and part of it's not, so that's all I can say.
Okay.
So, and this is, this is a future business for my grandson, what I'm building, so that's what I'm doing.
All right, well, thank you.
That's about all I need.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Nixon from our board?
Is he as good a mechanic as you are?
He's getting that way.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak in opposition? All right, Board, what is your pleasure? Motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, second by Mr. Joseph. Was that right? Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All right, your application is approved. Thank you very much.
You have a good day.
You, too. Thank you. All right, next case, number nineteen three seventeen P, special use permit and site plan. Applicant is River City Communications.
How y'all doing today?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Keith Sutton, four seventeen Clover Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven twelve. We are trying to buy this property in Dixie Garden to run our communication company out of, and we just want to make sure we have it, I guess, used properly. So we just want to get a zone for special use so we can operate our business out of it and go from there.
All right, thank you. Hold on just one moment, Mr. Sutton, is there a question?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph?
Good afternoon.
How you doing today?
Okay. If I was in it better, I'd probably be twins. But as it regards to staff recommendation, are you aware that there have been particular stipulations placed on your project?
Yes, sir.
And you're fine with those stipulations?
I think you're referring to the replating of it, and that's just because one little, a quarter of the property, I guess, was another lot.
Correct.
And it's, I guess we have to come back in November for that.
And the landscaping issues and things of that nature?
Correct.
These are all issues that you're comfortable with?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Andrews?
One question, Mr. Sutton.
Yes, sir.
I was just curious. I was trying to figure out, I understand there'll be two persons doing the, manning the phone service?
It's not a phone service. We're a service company. We go in and run telephone and computer cabling for businesses. So we're, we're not in the, there's no walk-in customers. It's more of an office space for myself and our business partner, for us to come and do some paperwork and have some supplies stored. And we have three employees. If they need to come by and pick something up, but they're out on the job site ninety percent of the time. Like I said, we have no walk-in customers. We're strictly a phone call. They call us, say, hey, come out to our business and run some telephone cable for us, some data cabling, some fiber optic cabling, things like that.
Installation business?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, all right. Any other questions?
Are you going to store like all the, are you going to store the cable and all that?
Yes, sir. We'll have our cable stored there and just small hand tools and things like that.
All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, Board?
Motion to approve.
Sergeant?
Motion to approve by...
With steps.
Yes.
With stipulation, thank you, by Mr. Joseph, second by Mr. Andrews. Any discussion? Call for the vote. And the application is approved?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too. Thank you. All right, next application, case number nineteen three eighteen P. It's a zoning request. The application is S A D or sad investments? Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant?
Sad.
Is that you?
I'm not the applicant. My name is speaking in favor of.
Okay, is there anyone? Does the applicant know you're here?
No.
That's how I was in favor of.
Come on down.
That's a per.
You need to change it to G L A D, glad investments.
Not my business. I'm Robert Lewis, sixty-seven thirty-seven Greenwood Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven nineteen. I'm also a proud member of West Shreveport. Executive Director Clark and Commissioners, I appreciate the time to come and speak. I spoke in front of y'all several years ago. I am building Hargates Vineyard out across the street from this property. And I had worked with several members of the MPC to make sure I found a property that would work well with zoning. And after two years, we did locate this property. The MPC did say that this property would be a good location because that area out there is primarily industrial. The individual that is actually doing this property, he works next door at Doggett Tractor Supply. And he had told me several months ago that they're wanting to use this as a yard for their eighteen-wheelers that houses for the vehicles to be able to transport the large equipment at Doggett Tractor Supply. They have already been working on that area and cleaning it out, which does make the area look better. So that's why I did want to come and speak in support of that. With the rezoning a couple of years ago, my zoning that I had come before the MPC to have done got reverted back to residential. So I thought I'll have to come back and do another hearing as well to have my zoning reissued back to having a business again. So I just want to make sure that this area is still going to remain more industrial than residential. So I am very supportive of this project, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have on the property, since they're not here to speak for it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, I think, has a question?
Oh, yes, sir.
I have a question about that property, Madam Chair, if I may go to his personal property.
Yes, sir.
What happened to the winery? I've been waiting to come by and drink a glass of wine.
We're actually in seventeen stores now. So we have been working on developing the property, and we have the vines, the ground, but it was a very long process to get the vines to that point to be able to start producing. So we do have wine in about seventeen different stores now, but we do want to build a tasting room eventually. So that'd be the best part, so people can come out and enjoy it. And all the people in, where Shreveport will actually have a good place that they can come, get a glass of wine, have a good meal, and it wouldn't be a fast food restaurant.
Well, don't tell my pastor, but that's the part I remember was the tasting room.
Right, yes, sir.
I remember when you came before and we were all kind of excited.
Yes, sir.
That was something different coming to our neighborhood.
Definitely, yes, sir.
And something that people would enjoy coming.
Yes, sir. I'm still working on it.
All right.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Lewis? No, and thank you for speaking on behalf.
Sure.
Or in support of.
In support.
Not on behalf. All right.
Hopefully he'll hear about that.
Yes. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, Board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Clark, what, I'm sorry. Mr. Clark, what, can we move forward with this?
You can move forward. You're so inclined to either approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve by Mr. Andrews, second by Mr. Dale.
The recommendation is to approve?
Yes.
Yes, with its steps.
With steps.
Yes. All right, any discussion? All right, call for the vote. And that application's approved, so I guess we will let them know.
Right.
All right, and last but not least, case number nineteen four eleven C, a special use permit and site plan for the applicant. Uh-oh. Is it Omar Ali?
Correct.
Ali?
Omar Ali.
Ali, okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Here, nineteen eleven Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana. Here pretty much to get a permit for special use at my business establishment. And ever since, the place is pretty much is an upscale liquor store that I'm doing there. We already present have beer and wine there, and pretty much just to expand. Ever since I've been present there, crime has decreased there in the area. We got advanced security system in a place of business, and in the community, I've been uplifting the community pretty much in that area over there, reviving it, cleaning up a lot of old trash around the buildings over there as well. We got another piece of property that I'm redoing there as well, cleaning up the whole area pretty much, making it presentable in the neighborhood, and everybody in the neighborhood is loving it, and everybody's happy there, and pretty much, that's it.
Excuse me, sorry.
Bless you.
Thank you. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ali?
I have.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you met with any of the residential people in that area?
Yes, everybody there, they're the one, they actually been coming forth to me every day, can you please get liquor for us? Can you please get liquor for us in the area, around the area over there?
I don't live too far, and that was my reason why I was asking you.
There's a liquor store not too far down there because of the area, because I uplifted the area pretty much. It looks very nice. And the store is a very, very nice, beautiful store from inside. It's clean, safe. A lot of people feel safe in their neighborhood when they come around to the store. It's a lot of lighting around it, and people just, they're happy. I get a lot of, they like their presence there, and a lot of the community that love me over there in that area as well. I've been there for about eighteen years.
All right. Any other questions from Mr. Ali? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Welcome. Hang on, I'm sorry. Wait till you get to the microphone so we can hear you. Okay, take your time.
My name is Tracy Williams. I live at two oh five Egan, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh four. And I just want to add that since the store has been there, he does keep the area pretty clean, and they get the stores awesome. They got food, they got, you know, a lot of things. And a prime example of safety is that my car was broken to. He has an awesome, awesome camera system. It pulls up everything, so it helped me. But it's good to have there. He's really keeping the area clean. He keeps people out. They don't hang around the store. So it's okay, and we just do, we love him over there because he keep everything all right, and I like his camera system. Again, I like his camera system.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom Arsno. I live at five thirty-six Jordan Street, Shreveport, seven eleven oh one. And I'm here individually. I'm not here, I'm usually here representing someone, but I'm representing myself today. This is a really bad location for a liquor store. There's, there is, it is a transitional part. I had some part in the alcohol decisions back in the nineteen eighties. And that was because there was a good establishment to come in, and unfortunately, that led to some of the things that are happening right now. So I would have to say on balance that Enox was a mistake. This is the former Enox location. This is in the middle of a residential area. It doesn't have a lot of parking, and so it's going to be walk-up traffic. The liquor store that I think he bitched, and I don't know which it is, but it's the Daiquiri Shop at the corner of Centenary, and that's not a liquor store. I believe that that is low alcohol content only because HRA also fought the liquor location there while I was president of HRA. This is a relatively high-crime area. It is an area that is mostly foot traffic, and this will invite further foot traffic and an even greater opportunity for the sale of alcohol. There have been a number of problems. HRA has opposed the expansion of alcohol at this location on a number of occasions, and for good reason. We're doing our very best to reinvigorate this neighborhood, and a liquor store at this location, which is not a prime street, is not a good idea, and we respectfully request that you deny the application. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, excuse me.
No.
I strongly agree with you. To me, it is a high-crime area. Every time you look up, it is something going on in that area, and I'm hoping the same thing that you just stated.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Because I'm very familiar with that area.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Good to see you, Councilor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application?
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Fine, how are you?
I'm here to speak, my name is Jamar Myers Montgomery. Everybody knows me as Doc Montgomery. I'm here to speak in opposition of this application. I guess there would be a lot of happy people when they've been drinking. I live at one twenty-four Merrick Street, which means that I live, I can see my house on that map. I live in that neighborhood. I walk in that neighborhood. We talk about that area being a high-crime neighborhood, but we do not deal with the causes of crime. One of the causes of... One of the causes of crime being alcohol. Like we said, like has been said earlier, this is not a good area for a liquor store. It's not. We're not thinking about the children who live in that community, who have to walk in that community. I walk, I run in that community. I live there. I get my hair cut right across the street. I live in this community. So to have a liquor store that's there, yes, it is well-lit. But of course, it is a beacon, but it's not the kind of beacon that we want to have in our neighborhood. If this were your neighborhood, I don't think that you would be in support of it. So I speak in strong opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. And Mr. Montgomery and I represent children together at juvenile court. Someone can throw that out there.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Good seeing you.
Any questions for Mr. Montgomery?
Madam Chair, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Montgomery, came and sat down and talked with me about the process of zoning, and the process of planning, and how we can make things much more available to all the citizens in the city of Shreveport. We've initiated some of those initiatives already to make things more available to citizens, and libraries, and on the web page, and so forth. We really appreciate it. It's input.
Thank you.
I have a question, just.
Yes.
Are you opposed to, you opposed to the liquor, I got that, the hard liquor. But you're not opposed to, if you had your choice, of beer and wine? They do sell beer. I don't know if they sell wine, but... I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the difference, why we allow one but not the other.
Well, let's give an idea of where the liquor establishments are in this community. On Centenary and Stoner is the daiquiri cafe. My understanding is that there, hard liquor is sold there. From my last, my last experience, or at least I know beer and wine is definitely sold there, and daiquiris are sold there. Okay, the location that he's talking about, nineteen eleven Centenary, within a mile and a half, there are two establishments that sell alcohol. So the daiquiri cafe that's on the other side, on Centenary and Stoner, and then the thrifty liquor that is on Yuri, all within a mile and a half of each other. The issue that I have is that this is a residential area. There are children that live here. We would like to think about the adults that can decide on whether or not they want to enjoy or partake in alcohol. But there are children here. This, yes, so it is heavy foot traffic that is there. This is an, I wouldn't say a high-crime neighborhood. I would say this is a neighborhood and a community that is suffering from a lack of economic development. The only development economically that happens in that, with a liquor store, is just Mr. Ali's pockets. It does nothing for the economic development of the greater neighborhood. If anything, it sucks from the community.
Yes, it does.
So you'd rather not have the beer there?
I'd rather not have it at all.
Thank you. And I believe the beer and wine is not before this board today?
No, it's not. I was just curious.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
The difference.
Because I think that's currently.
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Clark, for implementing those recommendations. What he's talking about is making access to the information on the zoning process more available. Having, there are no hard copies that can be found at the libraries. So for informed citizens and other senior citizens, and senior citizens who do not know how to utilize modern technology, a lot of them like to go to the libraries. That information was not available, and I'm an advocate for my grandfather as well. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your interest.
Do you have the opportunity to talk to other, to other neighbors about this?
I'm a member of the Highland Restoration Association as well. I've talked to some of my neighbors as well. Yes, I have.
What did they say?
They sent me. Any more questions, Mr. Rook?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Edgerton Scott. I live at five forty-nine Wilkinson in Shreveport, seven eleven oh four. Like Ms. Arseneau, usually in the past, I've been here representing our neighborhood association. Currently, I'm here speaking for myself. But I've lived in Highland over thirty years, and I've been active in a variety of ways of trying to uplift the neighborhood, some of which Ms. Smith would be familiar with, with the early Head Start program there. And I would urge you to follow the, the, kind of the historical data that the staff provided, as well as the kind of historically looking at issues in this particular spot. And, and, you know, kind of remember all the hours and dollars we spent on the master plan. And whilst I understand that beer and wine is a use by right, liquor is something altogether different. So I would urge you to attend to the report from the staff. And like Ms. Arseneau, respectfully ask you to deny this application.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
I would just like to say, good to see you again. And our early Head Start program is doing a magnificent job in the area, and we thank you for your little library.
Right, and my little free library as well. But I was at the early Head Start in Highland today. Are there any questions regarding this application? Thank you.
Very much. We appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? All right, any, is there any rebuttal, Mr. Ali? Oh, there you are.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Uh, just my presence, just to let you, I've been in the community for eighteen years. I've been there, I see day-to-day operation, what goes on into the neighborhood. I help out so many different people in the community, every single day there, their friends, like pretty much family to me as well, that I work with daily, side by side. And I, ever since that store has been there, crime from those apartments has went down numerically by my presence being there. I help out with the SPD, whatever they need, I help on their presence. They sit at the, they actually give permission to stay in my parking lot, and I got a huge parking lot. Could put maybe twenty-five, thirty cars to park in the parking lot, a huge, huge facility in the back. They come, they sit through the reports in the parking lot, they come monitor things, do everything. And that keeps a lot of the crime in the apartments down. When you see SPD presence into the property, you can see too many people going to do anything. And I keep a zero tolerance policy there, no hanging out, no lawtering. And pretty much, I try to help out as much I can for the community. And a lot of people sit there, they say they do stuff for the community. I'm handing up, helping out people, doing stuff as well there. And as present as my, as I gotta say, the crime has went down numerically. And hopefully you guys favor it, yes, because it's a very upscale place. It's not no trashy-looking place, facility, and all that stuff, like other people portray, so.
Yeah, I have a question. Do you have the time to talk to the neighbors association?
The neighbors association, no. Because everybody there, if there were so many opposed people that came, we had the zone changes signed there for the past two weeks. Has it been up? Nobody's been opposed to it. And everybody in there, they love it because it's a clean area, and they feel safe coming to the place. They don't feel, it feels like a home. It's a, it's like a homie place, pretty much.
Are you part of the neighbors association?
No, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Ali? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Board, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Ms. Smith. Do you have a second? A second by Mr. Rook. Is any discussion? I believe the recommendation from the staff is a denial. No discussion? We'll call for the vote, and a vote of yes will be a denial, a vote to deny the application, in keeping with staff's recommendation. And that application is denied. Thank you all for participating in the process today. We appreciate your input. All right. Yes, I don't know how to, I just thank you all. All right, any old business committee chair reports? Did we have a master plan meeting recently? Anyone like?
The first debate was in charge again.
Any committee reports, just thinking about the master plan committee, I know that we need.
I was out at the last meeting. The next meeting is tentatively scheduled for November.
Okay.
And just from a master plan perspective internally, through the community planning department, we're just continuing our input planning outreach and research moving forward for that.
Great. All right, any other committee reports?
It will not be Friday.
I think, I think we didn't have the quorum, right, requested. And one of the points was that next meeting, we're going to vote about having some kind of requirements, you know, to attend the meetings.
We just had that discussion. For the agenda.
Is that, is that new business?
Yep.
Do we have a, okay, I think. Okay, Mr. Colvin, do you have?
Yeah, you ready?
Yeah, just go ahead and ask for the update.
On old businesses, Alan, what's been going on with NL cog or the transportation thoroughfare project? Any new updates on sixty-nine, inner-city forty-nine?
There are no real updates on.
Either one.
Any, either one. I will have your report at the next meeting.
Well, what I keep getting in the general public is, you know, they made the big splash about getting a hundred million dollars earmarked for inner-city I forty-nine. And now every time you see somebody, they think it's going to be built in the next six months. So if you can get an update, that'll be good.
The last, the last update we got was possible in the next two years.
To get right away?
Yes.
Okay.
To start that process.
Are there any other old business? Okay, new business, research? Mr. Clark?
Basically, I think we had set this aside for the, and I think Adam was giving you a report of future research that we'd set this aside for the community planning, neighborhood planning division, to talk about the type of research that we're doing. We've been doing a lot of things. I'd like to just highlight that the food truck ordinance that we really had a difficult time with, went into effect yesterday, Adam.
Well, it actually, the ordinance went to effect September seventh. But internally, that gave us approximately three weeks to do our best in getting in touch with all of the existing food truck operators, as well as those who aren't currently licensed, to bring them up to speed on what the ordinance is, what the application process is, and what they can do if they're not licensed to come in and get registered as a food truck and trailer vendor. Internally, we set an October first enforcement date, to which we will then, now, because it's October second, Regi and zoning enforcement will kind of go out, start enforcing that ordinance.
Sounds good. And thank you for all that work, because that's not a simple process.
And also, Madam Chair, I share with you, each, each meeting, zoning administration will give you a report on the number of certificate, certificate of occupancies that have been issued, which indicates the, the idea of the fact that business is growing in the city of Shreveport. It's not growing at the rate that we would like for it to be growing, but it is growing. If you would allow me to ask Mr. George to just give you an update on businesses in the city of Shreveport, and you have a report from him.
I would be delighted.
Thank you.
Okay, well, as you see, the report in front of you has broke down a number of businesses, home base and commercial, that entered the city from the date of September first to September thirtieth, broke down by council district. And for the month of September, we had a total of sixty-five new businesses coming to Shreveport.
Bravo.
And also to go along with that, if you recall, in your, in your accomplishments report, it shows other businesses that we have approved site plans for, that haven't even started construction as of yet. But they are also added to that total. We just want to keep the board abreast of what's happening in the city and how it's moving in a positive direction.
Well, good news is always appreciated.
Question for Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Clark, question, the material that you guys just shared with us, Mr. George, and then the data that you gave us upstairs, since, the documents that we reviewed upstairs showing businesses, will you be sharing that with the council and the commission at any point in time?
We can share it with both bodies, and will, if that's your desire. I think in the climate that we're in, relative to budgeting, they might think that you're wasting their time by talking about it. But there may be someone sitting there that will appreciate hearing that kind of information. And then, we're in the election climate right now, and it appears that there may be some new commissioners coming on board who have not been on the parish commission before. And then there are some who are aspiring to get their seat back. Now may be the time to let them know how much we appreciate what, what our staff is doing, but at the same time, encourage them to help us to continue to move this business forward, that we're all involved in on volunteer basis. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
If I may, Madam Chair, the county parish commission had noticed that there was, that the city council had a section in their agenda each month for master plan updates. And the parish commission did not. And recently, the parish commission amended their agenda to include master plan updates on their agenda. So the commission is becoming more interested in the things that we're doing, and that would just be an asset, addition, Mr. Andrews, to the things that we're already doing with the commission. Thank you.
All right, any other new business? Okay, the next item on the agenda.
Just one more thing, Madam.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We have one last report from Adam Bailey, reference to COTEX amendments.
As is typically historical precedent, before the board, anytime COTEX amendments come before you, we want to give you a thirty-day notice. There will be some COTEX amendments on your November agenda. Most of these are just quarterly updates with, you know, time in. We kind of go through the code, and we see things that need to be changed, whether because of various housekeeping, corrective changes, grammatic mistakes, contradictions, or missing items. Also, the nature of business sometimes changes in Shreveport, and sometimes we try to keep ahead of that to make the code more business-friendly. What I really want you to know about, that's going to be a part of it, is we're going to be proposing something known as the Neighborhood Participation Program, which will be a COTEX amendment. The master plan specifically addresses the need to provide a structured method for neighborhood associations, residents, and other stakeholders to be informed of any forthcoming development. We're going to use New Orleans as a model and propose these COTEX amendments, which would require if there is a PUD, a special use permit, a rezoning, a variance, or a major subdivision, that they would have to go through this program, which requires the developer or the applicant to go in front of the neighborhoods and develop a report. That report will be attached to the application. So you will actually, when it's best to ask, hey, did you go out to the neighborhood, it will be required.
Ah, Ms. Smith, that's, could be your legacy.
Do you want to add anything to that?
That was one of the things that really disturbed me about us, that we continue to hear from neighborhoods, that if you'd only told us what was coming, and there are some downsides, as you saw today. But we're going to continue to refine this process, because we strongly feel that neighborhoods have a right to know what's coming to their neighborhoods. And even if it is a use by rights, they still have a right to know that it's coming and not just look up on their trees falling down, and they have no idea what's coming. So we're sort of excited about this process from our research, community, neighborhood planning division.
Great. All right, thank you. I know y'all are all engrossed in this conversation. Okay, next matter. I would ask Mr. Andrews, we're on number thirteen, other matters to be reviewed. The executive director term, I'm going to ask Mr. Andrews to speak.
A few weeks ago, we were entering into a discussion relative to the job that Mr. Clark was doing in. Mr. Clark was doing, and, and then we were, I was personally baffled as to how much time we had asked him to give us in the seat of executive director from the time that he was officially designated as executive director, as opposed to interim. And when we did our research, it indicated it was only twelve months. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is that we're getting close to that twelve-month standstill spot. And what jogged my memory to this point of asking the chairman for conversation today, especially, is that when we received this information about accomplishments from August the sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen to date. And it's, to me, it's impressive. I don't know how our public officials will see it, and then to receive a, what is Dale, you call it a violations report, and then we turn around and see a certificate of occupancy request, to me, that's progress, and it's, these are the kinds of things that we've not seen before.
Yes.
And I just want to say thank you for doing that. And what I would be interested in doing at this point is, is challenging board members to consider taking a look at Mr. Clark's position and the amount of time that he's served in, perhaps maybe extending that amount of time at some point in time, if he chooses to accept it, he may not, he may want to cut and run once his twelve months is up. But I'm, I'm interested in asking the board to consider extending his time at least twelve months, and then give us time, if any of us are still on the board, to consider identifying a new executive director to possibly replace him at that point in time after this next twelve months rolls around.
Is there something I missed? Are you going somewhere?
Unless y'all send me away.
We just, we, we need to, like he was saying, we, there's a, the transcript from our previous meeting would indicate we put him in there, or we approved twelve-month term.
Well, I got it. I, I tracked that. I was just, I like to go to the next step and be sure I didn't miss something.
We had a secret meeting, and you were not included.
Because we have to open it up to everybody?
No, no, I didn't say that. I don't know, what was your question?
It's why, the question... Is it, we're extending, which I'm in favor of, by the way, I don't want you to think I'm not.
Right.
Um, but why wouldn't we just offer him the position, and then when he wants to retire or whatever happened, then we look for a new executive director? Is there a reason, or do we?
That's what I'm getting at.
If we do that, do we have to open it up to everybody and interview everybody, or can we just appoint?
Extend his contract indefinitely?
Okay, that's what we need to do.
I would, I would, I would recommend that, and then when, if we, if for some reason he doesn't do a good job, which I don't see that happening, or if he wants to retire or go to another job, then we would look for...
Do we need a motion?
Yes, yes, you need a motion.
We do, and we're not out, we're not out of order by moving today, we can move as early as today.
Oh, we could do it now, okay.
Are you opposed to that? I'll make, I make a motion to extend, well, let me finish it. Please, thank you. Let me say, make sure, correct me if I say wrong, to extend his contract as an executive director indefinitely.
Second a motion.
All right, I have a motion to extend a director, executive director Clark's, it's not a contract, is it?
Agreement. Employment agreement.
Yes, let me correct that, employment agreement.
Or tenure, or whatever.
Second again.
This is not being articulated very well by me, I apologize. But we, a motion to extend your term indefinitely, and a second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All right, do we need to have a formal? Okay, we'll call for the vote. It's gonna be a hands thing. All right, and congratulations to Kato Shreveport for having Mr. Clark.
Can I say, can I say something, Madam Chair?
Please.
With that, I encourage, to use our executive director's term, I encourage you to not wind up taking this as a vote to lead you to wind up carrying yourself like my Dallas Cowboy running back who got a big, who got a big raise and then just kind of disappeared.
That got, got beat by a second-string quarterback.
Congratulations, man, very well deserved.
And mostly thank you.
Can I just say?
Please.
Can I just thank, being appointed by you, by in twenty-eighteen was one of the most humbling events that's ever happened in my life. I have had a wonderful time, it has been exciting, we have some incredible people on our staff, and that's why I try to make certain every meeting that you get introduced to these people, and that you interact with these wonderfully young, experienced, well-educated individuals, and they're doing a wonderful job. It's just an honor for me, and I thank you so, so very much for the opportunity, and I will continue to strive to take Shreveport to heights that are not even in our imagination as we work hard each day in the planning department.
And thank you to Mr. Gene also for really making what could have been dramatic a seamless transition, and being so supportive of the group.
You're good team.
That's what I said, and to pick up on that phrase, I'd like to extend some, some kudos to Adam Bailey.
Yes.
He makes y'all both look a lot better than you actually are.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson.
Hey, I'm a truth-sayer, man.
Let's not, let's not leave out Red.
He's still, he's still trying to earn our love, actually.
He's been doing a great job, doing a great job with us.
And thank you so much for being so patient and explaining, you know, all the...
That's what we're here for, Mr. Roker. I just had a couple things to share, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
As I share it with you, we've tentatively, Act eight-fifty-nine requires that all planning commissioners receive planning commissioner training by an approved plan by the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and is provided by the state APA, Parish Planning Association chapter. We are working to have that training for November the ninth. There are two people on the board that have not received this training, that would be Mr. Roker and Mr. L. Bursa. And we're, it's about a four-hour training session, it's gonna generally be from eight to twelve on a Saturday morning. You will be there, plus six other ZBA board members that have to receive this training, and three other board members from Bojor Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Just wanted to let you know, it's tentatively scheduled, we will, once we lock it in, we will notify you plenty of time, so hopefully you can be in attendance. Those are all the announcements I had, that's one other. There's a new ZBA board member, and the new ZBA board member name, her name is Brittany Don. She will sit forward for confirmation at the parish commission's work session on Monday. She will be confirmed tomorrow, and she is adjourned appointee by both the city and commission. And now we have a total board in both areas of the MPC board and the zoning board of appeals, so we're ready to shake rattling rope.
Great. And also, board members, we all have to have public servant ethics training before the end of the year, and there have been some zealous citizens in our community that have been anxious to call and report us for not having it at twelve oh one AM, January first. So, I would encourage you to get online and do it if you have any, if you have questions about how to access the video. I have to do this every year as a state employee anyway, along with sexual harassment training, and blood pathogens, and defensive driving, but we just have to have ethics. So, make sure, if you have questions, the staff, there's been some emails that show you how to do it, and it takes, it's not very long, but it's an interactive video where you have to answer some questions throughout it, and then you'll get credit online, and it's free.
I got a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Clark?
Who's at the government office at twelve oh one on January one to get a phone call?
It's all anonymous, Mr. Colvin.
But nobody's answering the phone, is what I'm saying.
Well, believe me, they're, they're being submitted.
Yes, and I, and I will request Emily to reach out to you again via email to remind you.
Yes, she has, we have emails.
She's been reaching out, but evidently y'all have not been listening to Madam Chair, y'all have not been responsive to doing the training.
It's October the second, come on.
I will ask her to reach out again in the rest of the month. And we have to, Madam Chair, we have to go through sexual harassment training and ADA training.
The commission does?
No.
Oh, y'all do too? Yes, so do I. It's really fun.
All right, then.
All right. Any other comments from the director? Is that, are we, first to John, all right? You have a motion to a John, second? All right.